No, thanks.
Looks like we're recording on YouTube. We're unmuted. There's just not enough. There's not enough.
You're ready, right?
Yep, we're on.
Okay, we would like to welcome everyone to South Beach City Council. Session. Six P M now. And today is April twenty second, twenty twenty five. We're going to begin with a pledge of allegiance. By Councilman Powersman and a prayer by Councilwoman Petty. Please stand.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that's me, sorry. This.
The intro.
Yeah.
Our father, level we come together gratitude for the wonderful community that we live in. And you're so grateful for the beautiful spring weather that we are receiving masks at home. Be able to continue to bless us with the moisture that we need to sustain ourselves throughout this season. Help us to be able to discuss matters for our community and be able to have open hearts and minds. We're so grateful for our police and our sheriff and our our firefighters and our military, please watch over them and their families. We're so grateful again for all that we have when we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ in us.
Councilman Davis has asked a big excuse. We will be with us tonight, so we that's the evening you want me to be here. Now, we'll begin with the public comments. If you'd like to comment, do that. If you've come up to the microphone, state your name and city in which you reside. You have three minutes to speak and please speak in the background. Open commentary. Public comments, sorry.
How do you get it? Sorry, no comment.
Hey, see, no comment tonight. We'll move along with our agenda. Uh, next item, new presentation.
Did you have any comments?
One presentation that we would like to make uh this evening. We're gonna turn some time to Dave for that.
Neil Swan coming to the podium. No, really, my intent uh is just simply to start this off with uh teeing up the idea that this is a really big deal for the city and for the community in general. That uh one of our own, our city treasurer, Tia Jensen, uh is now certified as a certified public funds investment manager, which, if you recall, at the end of last year, the council made a decision to begin investing some of the city money outside of the public treasury investment fund, which is, you know, specifically managed for Republican and these money in the state of Utah. Uh with the intent of being better financial stewards of the city's money. Uh so far in the first quarter, that has played out. Uh the admin finance committee met recently and reviewed the investments and things like that. But this adds a layer uh to the city of the financial activity and knowledge within staff that can really be a benefit to the community. And so want to stand and publicly recognize Tia for the hard work to make that happen. This is, this is just a really big deal. So it's not my presentation to make, but I wanted to make sure the community understood how meaningful this is. So I'll turn it over to Brett for the official presentation.
You can walk there wherever you like to go. I know.
Just to start off, um Tia's been working on this well before she even got this certification. As, as David mentioned, um she's spent countless hours working with different financial investors. And we ended up deciding with one in, in December and switched over. And she even came up with some policies and procedures on, on how to handle the city's public funds, um which kind of entail what this, what this certification is for. If you can go down to
Here we go.
Just below the staff report. So the, as Dave mentioned, this is a certification, certified public financial investment manager. That's a big title, um but it does mean a lot. And so what is that? Can you go to, to the next slide? Just go down a moment. So this enhances the knowledge skills and, and the competence in managing public funds. It's very simple. It provided tools for her to, for how to invest, what to invest, and different strategies that we can use here at the, at the city. Um I know recently I was down at a conference in, in St. George, and some of the other cities were asking what we're doing with our P T F. And I mentioned that we just started our investments and they were, they were very happy with to see that, that we're investing. They've been struggling getting their council on board to invest. And, and I think already we're seeing a big, a big improvement for the city and I expect pretty things for it. And Tia's been a huge part of that. Um can you go to the, to the next slide? So this is Tia hard at work studying, preparing for this. Before preparing for the certification. Um I watched countless hours doing that. And this, this time he, he looks to the next slide. This is the official certification that she got. Um this is just an amazing thing that she's done. I know she's been hours and hours um studying, training, learning, then going to online, listening to online presentations. And so at this time, we'd just like to congratulate her for, for her great achievement.
I stood up now. I don't know how to get rid of it. I turned it off.
Move on to our present agenda consisting of March twenty fifth minutes. Any changes to minutes? Anyone has any changes or like for a motion to a previous agenda?
I would approve, consider the agenda presented, stacked group.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Inside more than twenty five dash seven chapter, fire this first restriction. We review this every year and that's, that's fine before we begin to fire works. So anything changes or approve restrictions to the county city, any concerns?
This is no different than previous years. Is the boundary stated exactly as in?
Yeah.
May I move to the third ordinance, twenty twenty five zero seven, tell through the fireworks restriction?
Do a roll call vote, starting with Councilman Halverson.
Aye.
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 Hey, well, thank you very much. Next item, resolution twenty five dash eleven, the dolphin in the twenty twenty four municipal wastewater planning program annual report. We also, you know, we have to take care of it every year. And uh Brandon, you got anything to add to that? Anything change or?
I don't have anything to add. I'm just here to answer any questions if you have any. It's more of a formality.
Yes.
My only question would be, it's stated in the um annual report that our last public hearings in twenty fifteen, how often do we have to have a hearing for that?
Which page specifically?
It was two weeks away now, you mean?
Two thousand fifteen, we actually hold a, just a public hearing on just this? And we
I know it asks about the most recent capital facilities plan, which was twenty seventeen, and now we're in process of reviewing and updating mask. Is that what you're referring to?
I am so sorry, I didn't notice the page on here.
I think, you know, the page you're referring to is um page thirty nine of the P D F or nineteen of the document.
Okay, right there. Has this completed um in public notice?
So, um.
What's a U S M P?
I mean, to answer your question, I don't know that another one is needed.
Okay.
Because I believe that that was just the beginning of this new requirement. And then they just are required to bring this to you annually. Um but I could look into that more.
It, yeah, if you wouldn't mind, just make sure that we're not out of compliance of, to have a public notice on this.
I believe that when they required sewer systems to have a management plan, which you just read a previous page, you know, having you completed a sewer management plan, um sewer system management plan, that's the S S M P. And the answer is yes to that. And then you can continue down on the next page. That's where I believe that when you implemented that, you had to public notice that. Um but I will, I will confirm that that's not something we need to do another, you know, public hearing or something.
Okay, thank you. That was my other question.
Anyone else?
Mayor, I'm looking for pre- resolution twenty five eleven, document twenty twenty four, municipal wastewater planning program annual report.
Yeah, Washington and a second, Councilwoman.
Aye.
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 Efficient items updated on the public works facility complex. Dave?
Most of my update was uh written in the staff report along with the images. Um you can see that there's good progress being made. Uh specifically the material storage and the vehicle storage, which were the first two facilities to kind of be erected there. Um the vehicle storage specifically already has the concrete poured inside and, and it's really taking shape. Most of the garage doors are installed as well as windows and things, so it's, they're starting to do interior work there. Um and it's taking shape. The main building is now getting, uh getting attention and the, and it's just coming together really nicely. So hopefully those images paint a picture of what, what is taking place down there as well as the staff report on other specific details. But happy to answer any questions if you haven't.
Staff's running very well and uh we're staying on budget and currently on schedule, so.
Any luck from Castle, any suggestions? I don't know, it's coming down. Okay, next item, uh fiscal year twenty twenty six, budgets.
Hey, um really, I kind of put this back on you guys if you have any discussions, but to hit some of the highlights. Um there's been a few changes even with the, the general budget and a few other items when, that have come up within the last few weeks. Um I did a final review of, of salaries of where we're currently at. There's been a few adjustments to parks and admin um for certifications that have been, that have been completed in, in those departments. Um with the capital projects fund, uh we, Brandon, Dave and I kind of met a few weeks ago about the street, streetlight replacement program. And, and at that point, we, and it's also above in, in council, the, the cost on the Rocky Mountain power and that utility, the increase that we're expecting there, uh we thought it would be a good idea to kind of revamp this, this replacement program. And we made a suggestion of rebudgeting the prior year a hundred thousand dollars, so a total of a hundred fifty thousand dollars towards that program in fiscal year twenty six.
Yeah.
Yes.
On page seventy five in graph budget, I noticed that the uh utility streetlights still says fifty thousand. Is that not the place for this to be? Up to a hundred fifty or want to share this one?
Or is this just a suggestion and you didn't change on the actual budget, yeah?
That, the replacement program is actually in, in the capital funds, from forty five.
Can you help me understand though what the fifty thousand is for the utility streetlights? Um page seventy five of the packet.
Let's see, let me give to it.
It's page, yeah.
Seventy five?
Seventy five of a hundred and ten, yeah.
It's right in the middle of the page.
That one, I, I believe is just repairs for the list, the streetlights, not actual replacement.
Is that repairs and utilities or?
That one I'll have to look into, but I believe that one is, is just repairs, not the actual streetlight replacement program. The replacement program is, is in twenty forty five capital projects. I'll, I'll, I'll look into this.
Thank you.
There was also a quick update to the RAP and ARCA funds I had mistakenly recorded in a memorial bench and as rap tax can use, but it's in reality, that should be the ARCA funds. Um I also updated the F A C security amount in the supplemental request to, to be more accurate uh as to what we're expecting to, to pay for that. Uh but we, we were almost right on, on spot with that change. Um we, we can have that up and going over at F A C. There was a, yeah.
Just can I answer the previous question? Tia found and looked um at the building there for that line item. That is just the power cost for streetlights. That's the utility bill.
Utility bill.
Yeah, thank you. That's what we're hoping to decrease by searching lights.
Thanks for the um one of the supplemental requests was a fire stationary model. They, they'd asked to, to have that provided in phases. Um we provided that kind of a breakout by, by the bathrooms upstairs and downstairs and also uh in addition to that, to that third bedroom. We haven't had a look at, at by construction company. So if we could, that, those are kind of the phases that Derek and I've talked about. Um both, they're very similar in costs, so it'd be more of a need from, from the fire department on what, which one they wanted to start with, if they wanted to do it in phases. We have any questions about that, that part of it?
I couldn't find the numbers. Check your flip pages, numbers are showing them.
The supplemental request is on
Also, it's not
It's on, it's on page fifty five, it's the second, actually fifty six.
But he didn't, he hasn't given us the, the two different numbers yet, right? The actual, I didn't see the number either.
I, I was looking at the budget for the numbers and I couldn't find it. So I guess it goes back to the question, have these been incorporated?
This has, this has not been incorporated into the budget. It wasn't one of those green line items that we put in there. This is a, a, we need to have further discussion. So sorry, sorry for that confusion. It's not in, in the actual budget. This is an item that it, the council decided to have further discussion and breakout those into the phases. Um if we wanted to do one, two, or three, or all of them this next year or none of them, uh that's kind of a, a temporary council.
That was been discussed by the public safety committee?
Not the breakout, no.
Not the breakout, but these are the phases preferred by Chief Tomlin?
Yeah.
If you'd like me to, to put them into the budget, I, I'm more than happy to do that. Um it would just be preferred to have a further discussion on it.
I guess I'm coming from, I don't know how much money we have available to be able to get, to direct towards these expenses. So I don't know what the impact, a hundred thousand or that, or sixty thousand or four thousand. You know, wh- what direction from my perspective to provide?
At kind of at this point, uh we're, without knowing what current property tax is and sales tax, those are all estimates. Um at this point, it would be, it would be coming out of the fund balance.
Well, it's not within the estimate of the property, that whole property tax. We'd be in excess of the additional revenues. And so we got to bring in money for
Yeah, this would be within the capital projects fund. And all of the capital projects funds are paid out with the fund balance there.
And so now I'm going back to the capital projects. What are our priority list and what is this rank with all the other priorities in there? That I'm all for, I know we take a hundred thousand away from a higher priority project. And what are those listed projects? It'd be nice to have that in front of us to know what decision we're making in regards to that. So I want to support the model, but I don't know, is it the number one priority? Is it the number twentieth priority of all the capital projects?
At this point, this is the, the project that was brought up to the council. There's, there's the others that um were chosen not to be part of it, some of these line items. Um coming out of the capital projects fund were, were the side by side, this fire stationary model and the multi-hazard mitigation plan.
Right, but the fire stationary model was asked to be put into phases. It wasn't passed as a, a single unit.
No, there's, the committee did not pass it as, as something to be part of, part of the budget. They, they wanted, they wanted to have a more discussion item about that.
Of each, of the phases.
Of the phases.
Yeah, so um I guess I'm confused from what you told him. So this budget is based on our projected income sources and what we are uh taxing and keeping the, the, the rate up. So that does give us kind of a fixed dollar value. So I, I, I'm kind of confused while you were saying it comes out of the where it comes from. But either it matches the budget that we're agreeing to at that percentage or it's going to be above and beyond by a hundred thousand dollars, which means we'd have to do an amendment to change it. So I'm just kind of confused, either it is part of the budget or it's not part of the budget.
At this point, it, it was because you wanted further discussion on it, it's not part of the budget. There, there were items that are on there. Um we don't have a fixed amount for the property tax yet.
Right. And I understand that we've made calculations based on that, so we've got a budget that works on those calculations.
At this point, it is a balanced budget.
Okay.
Uh without, without that project in there.
Yeah, yeah. And the property tax is not a funding source for this capital project or any capital project. We use the twenty percent of sales tax that we earmark every year. And at the end of the year, if there's any surplus because we either underspent or revenue came in higher, that becomes one time money that we put into the capital projects fund for one time projects like this. So when I say fund balance, it means the money that is set aside for one time projects. It's not an ongoing revenue source other than the twenty percent of sales tax that we put in. And that's just on the sales tax for all revenue that the city does. Just the sales tax.
Very interesting.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, sorry for that.
So the, what I'm, what I'm saying is, if the council said, yes, we want to do that now, there's more than a hundred thousand dollars in the capital projects fund balance. We could do that right now. However, the question that Wayne brings up is very important is how does that one time money need to be allocated over time? Not just this year. To say money is, money is in the fund balance, well, let's pull it out and use it. Um that's a little bit myopic and not recognizing the, the longer term prioritization of projects, which, which we're still trying to map out and, and show. But the short answer is yes, this is the priority project right now. What we're talking about in relation to the other ones that were made as requests this year, saying we'd like to do it this year. It's that important. That's why Brett brought up the other supplemental budget request. And it didn't make the cut, because it's the last one that we're still talking about saying, is it in the budget or not? Um from a primary standpoint.
Can we do, we do, like you mentioned, we are working on a capital projects ten year plan. By cash flow and making sure that we have funds available for, for future projects. It's kind of in the works.
Women's and
I have, the budget portion has, has been a, a bigger projects that I've taken on and I haven't been able to spend the time on that. But I do have a, a good list of what projects are, that want to be done in the future. Um and that means we redefine this and looked at by the departments.
Could see it, no?
Something that we are tasked in completing so that, I, hopefully sooner than later, I'll be able to present a a ten year capital projects plan for you guys.
Right, I appreciate that, first of explanation and Dave, I appreciate it as well. I'm opposed to all three phases. I know the council people are giving the explanation every time, but I can support all three phases. But I'm right here with the council, I'd say. I would agree with you. I think we ought to budget all three phases, but I would like to bid it in three phases so we can line it up and see where it comes in. And then make a decision on which phases to order. Um but I also would like to, going back to Wayne's comment, I would like to see what it does for just that capital facilities list, if it, if it's bump, I don't want to bump anything. Because then, then we just say, no, we're only in phase one to get that extra bag. I know that's not the preferred for Derek, but that's, that's the need, right? So that is, I don't, I don't want to forego that for sure.
We, we want to make sure that we're being responsible with the fund balance that we do have.
Yes.
So that we can prepare for, or be ready for something unexpected to happen. Um so that we have those funds available for, for future projects.
Well, and that's what I thought, the reason why we requested the phases was so that we didn't do it all just on big chunk. Um yeah, so um if, it doesn't matter which order we want to do the phases, but um I, I'm not ready to commit the whole okay, because we're also going to be able to do phase one, and if that's the bedroom or the bathroom, or whatever it is they need, that's great, yeah, that's maybe the chief has been. But uh yeah, I would, I would, I would like to see what that first phase is going to cost before we start bumping things.
I, I suppose we'll go same. Um from my perspective, uh you can appropriate, a budget is, it says like the right appropriations, which are appropriate all three phases. But then we can always pause to follow the actually expend the funds before I hear you say. But if we don't budget for it ahead of time, that becomes hard to proceed. Uh something, I, my, it looks appropriate, but that doesn't get a great actual spend. It was, as, as one of the, Joe was saying, as well, saying, let's, you know, estimate a mountain, see if they follow through the budget and then bring each one back separately before we get awarded.
Uh an idea kind of to follow that, if we put the one hundred thousand dollars in the budget and then essentially go do project design, so to speak. Um potentially with the mayor's expertise or other contractors to, to kind of scope out the project and get more of a, of an engineer's estimate as well as potentially bid that out and have those phases clearly identified with a dollar figure associated with it and bring those back individually, is that what you're saying? Or bring them back, here's the actual quotes on all three phases. At that point, you can determine as a council to proceed or not proceed.
Speaking for myself, it's more of a matter, but I would like to see the budget for line items. The design costs, phase one cost, phase two cost, phase three cost. The design costs, phase one cost, phase two cost, phase three cost. And then that way you don't, I don't want to see one line item, a hundred thousand dollars you can spend up to a hundred thousand dollars for a design and whatever a builder. It leaves more room for, with the room, I'd rather say, no, let's design it, find out what the other three are. And then we can make those assumptions because we're no going. That's that's my perspective.
I agree with that.
So. Make it so.
Yeah, um we'll we'll work out with Derek and and those that are involved.
I'll come over, Derek.
Okay.
Get some ideas.
Sounds good. Thank you.
I can't tomorrow, but I'm trying to run in a week.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Um some of the bigger discussions for for today. Uh those were additions from last week that we that we talked about. Today, we kind of wanted to talk talk about the utility funds and the impact fees. Um I provided some detail on the analysis for those. And. Let's see, trying to think what page they were on. Starting on page. Uh well, let's do the bond first. Let's start on page fifty three. You can write, don't write on the page fifty three. You'd ask for a breakout of of the bond. And here's here's where we are with the with that bond, the public works bond. Kind of a breakout by department and then a breakout of what we what's eligible for impact fees. And what comes out of the fund itself. And well, that was just more of a a visual for you guys to see that. I hope that makes sense. If you have any questions in particular, these, like I said, this percentage breakout, the shared portion is is very. Blue and you guys can you guys decide how you want to break that out if if the fund looks like it's paying too much or department is paying too much. That's that's your call and you guys can help decide what what that should look like.
Right, could you show us what the velocity was and kind of how the percentage looks if you did?
That was Mac.
That was Mac and I don't have that. I believe it was by, I I want to say it was by F T E.
Yeah, I I believe it was by personnel in each department.
So they had some logic in this.
There there was some logic to it and I I haven't been able to to dive deep into it. Um.
I can add just a little bit to that. There were three main components. One was F T Es. One was kind of size of the department, meaning the, you know, water fund is bigger than the sanitation fund, right? So it is a it is a larger portion of the building because it's a larger fund, as well as actual space used in the building. Kind of broken that down. So not any one of those carried the day all the way, but those were the factors that Mac I know considered when he initially put this in place. Um and it started out initially as a, well, there's five different funds, so twenty percent in each one. And then, well, that doesn't really fit because of those three reasons. And so it morphed in there.
So would the council like to um set a schedule to have staff just reevaluate this and ensure this is still an appropriate method? Annually, over two years to make sure that it's being revised?
I think we stick to a schedule from the the life of the bond and whether we come up with anything, I feel like.
Okay.
I don't get into here and um and like I said, there's no black and white. F T E and floor space, budget, they're all not going to be missing each other. So I I trust we follow the plan. The council will agree with the plan and we stick to the plan.
I mean, it was it was hard and to Joe's point the other day is, you know, parks had a hundred thirteen thousand. It seemed excessive for the parks. And I get that the parks take up a lot of the space in the buildings. I don't know if that's, I don't know the size of the fund, just advise that. Because if it goes over that, we're going to, it's going to come out of the general fund. And we saw that on each budget. What was coming out of general fund, if it was going over and it was because of the parks did. Then we went over there, fixed budget, basically, the revenue because of that. But so it could be moved around if if we don't ever want those funds to do that, but. But I think it all comes out of the same eventually anyway.
I think it is too. That's why I just wondered if it was to be evaluated at any point, because at some point we're going to go, oh, parks can't afford this anymore. So should this be something that we just, it doesn't have to be a long process, just.
I don't. We can we can look at it every year. We can look at that. Listen to.
I didn't have a schedule in mind. I just thought it would be good to have some type of evaluation.
Yeah, as you were talking, reminded to, you know, salt in our storage building. I don't think that storage building is all salt, is it? Um but streets is what I, my country mind uses the salt. And the streets is all people saying that it's a tragedy, if they're trying to use that whole building. Reminded my thoughts going, hmm, the whole building is probably worth that one apartment when the rest of the caution was full amongst the other. Now I just added a fourth option there.
Well, it does hold, we get sand from the barks and dirt and.
Yeah, yeah.
It's divided up, it's, yeah, I I I agree. It's hard.
It's gonna get harder the way that we do it. I have no better way. So I'm just gonna go, although to Joe's point, parks is. Yeah, thank you, Bill, to swing that there. Um you know, show some information to the parks. And the revenue sources.
But that's very helpful to see, right?
Yeah, thank you.
Well, this will come forward every year, right? We can look and say, this is this is how the bond payment is allocated each year. To Brett's point, if you look at that and say, this year really shouldn't be like that. Um it can be year by year, we we look at it.
One column, pay to date. You've got annual payment, you got total payment, we can get a pay to date. So you know how much you should only be paid to my account.
Well, I kind of have a question on that because up above, we were saying, uh I I got no idea for it's in here. Um but it basically said, uh we're at uh twenty one percent of uh the bond paid. Um but the numbers that it was giving was nine million dollars, where on here it shows total payment is the fourteen million dollars. Yeah, I don't know where it comes from, but I'm saying if we're going to track it, um and know how much we're paying in it. Maybe we just, I guess, track us the principal and then subtract the interest, but it just makes sense if we're saying it's twenty one percent, it's actually till it's paid off. But. Right, the essentially two different tracking things there, right? What Brett's tracking is the overall project cost over the life of the bond and how much each fund will be paying that. Now, percentage is just how much of the construction cost has already been paid out, kind of where we at in this initial construction phase of of the project. So we received nine million dollars. How much of that nine million dollars is still in the bank or has been paid to the contractor for? Right, and so that we're just tracking two separate things there.
Okay, makes sense. Um as as you notice, there's breakout of thirty five percent of impact fees that are eligible. Keep in mind that there's already, impact fees are already being used for for other projects, depending on the type of impact fee. And I kind of have that broken down. You scroll down just a little bit on that same page. Um I have it broken out. Do which impacts are due from and due to, and their balances as of uh June thirtieth. So this year, a lot of those will decrease. Um and then we can start using some of those impact fees to pay to pay their portion of the bond. So we have to wait until. When they have enough, until they pay these off. These are basically loans from from the impact fees or or from other funds. And impact fees is is slowly paying off that balance. Moving on to to fleet. Before we get into the other funds, I kind of wanted to talk about fleet. That's kind of a a subject that we need to, that we want to have more discussion on. Um I know there have been discussions on whether we should hold a a lease for. For longer than three years. Um and looking at the way that switching from bank corp to to unite unified fleet. Um we we went over to a of basically a balloon payment. For the first three years, we have one payment and then it increases after that. So that's something to keep keep in mind when you're saying we want to hold it for five years rather than rather than three years. Um there is an eighteen percent increase about on average for most vehicles. If we if we hold on to it for longer than three years. So as you discussed fleet, um just keep that in mind. Then in.
Can I can I add one thing there? If you recall, when they very first came and presented and talked about their philosophy, the idea was to keep those lease payments low. And so it did kind of put some on to the backend there of the of the five year lease payment. And so that you can capture the value at three years, pay off the remainder and have leftover. That you then roll into the next vehicle or into the program in general. And so that's why that shows up the way it does is is they have those payments at the backend, higher than the payments at the front end. And just help keep costs down low on that vehicle when you get it and and capture that value. When you sell it in three years and use that value to help pay out the remainder.
I see, okay. Looking at the list and basically providing the list, it occurs to me, well, I got a question first. When we do the lease program, does it have to be factoring every vehicle that the city owns? Because in my view, a five year, ten year, or twenty year vehicle, those are in my words, a specialty vehicle. And maybe aren't conducive to a turnover every three years. A portlet, and I don't think a portlet's on, you don't need to portulate information, a portlet doesn't even need to turn around in three years.
Correct.
Give you more time now, uh the flash range or something like that. So I see some of these items on here, in five years, there's a question about a backhoe, a dump truck. Um these ones that they do, to me, those are more specialty. You mean, they don't get a high ten miles for maybe to get hit and used. Um so I don't know if they have to be on a lease program or just not. The last question is, is this all about?
No, no, it's it's it really comes down to to your decision as council. If we want to hold them for ten, five years, I mean, they're very flexible. Most of the most of the vehicles have been set up at least on a three year rotation. But it's not, it's not required that we search them out at three years. If you feel like we need to hold something on, hold on to something for a little bit longer, we can do that.
Well, the ones listed on a three year rotation, I don't have a question. Those are.
Yeah.
Vehicles, but five, ten, twenty, those are more special, right? So might listen something in the council, they have.
No, that was that was my opinion. And why I said what I said before is I think some of those vehicles should be on a totally different. Program, whether we just buy them outright or whether we. Put them on a separate loan or whatever we do, those, some of those vehicles, I'm not saying all of them at once in that fighter, maybe some of them need to be moved over. I'd have to kind of analyze that, like a trackhoe may only last three years if it's getting used a ton. But that can be up to the public works director to decide how that, or you know, whatever, whoever will bind it, probably helps with that type of decision. But the vehicles I completely agree with. I just know we were trying to get off of all of them at once. And so I know that might push some of them past that three year. And we were trying to divide that up on which ones. And so I thought it was, they're gonna have a tough time keeping within that three year. We were trying to. Break that up into three different groups. So we were doing some every year, not all of them.
Cor- correct. These are, um we do have them working out like years of when we're going to kind of like the three year rotation. A a good thing about switching over to unified is that our lease on those vehicles started when we when we switched over to unified. So that three year started when we recently switched over. So that that's when we have the payments. We have three years or or more if we want. We have that whole that three year starting this year, basically, to to work on that.
I think there's time and effort that goes into the rotation, but financially, whether you're doing. One vehicle or you're doing the whole fleet at the same time, financially, that doesn't change a whole lot. I think that's where we started looking into it was the three and the five wasn't necessarily by the vehicle as much as it was the budgeting process. So that we made sure we had uh whatever was needed a- as part of it for those different. Uh but yeah, it shouldn't, it shouldn't make the decision for us. It just means that we'll have enough money next time we. Kind of go enter, you know, another big vehicle that we know we have to plan for in advance. This is just some small screen example.
I love this worksheet. So thank you so much. This is the best breakout I've seen. So thank you.
This came from T X O.
Thank you, Tim. So I appreciate that. I do have a question and please somebody help me, because I am not seeing the ambulance on here anywhere. I'm seeing the medic and I'm seeing the Italian chief.
Because we own them, right?
Yeah.
But we should, we can put it, have it as a rotation.
Because we own the fire truck too.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we've got maybe a need to separate out what's the rotation schedule of vehicles versus the ownership and lease idea. Because these are combined right now. This is just showing when we plan to rotate vehicles, not the ownership or the lease program.
And and I guess how to that, how big of a deal is it to pull some of those out and put them on something different now that they're on that program? Because I know like our back back lawn or bobtail and all that are on that lease program currently, aren't they?
They are.
And I don't know how big of a deal it is to pull those out. There's an eighteen percent increase of the big number.
Maybe only pull out this car code, those that are home and those that are.
Well, currently they're not. What I was saying is if we try to pull those out of the lease program, not off this sheet necessarily. If what does it do to us to pull them out or the brush trucks or, because I know that was a night that. The chief wasn't here when we brought up brush trucks. It's like, wait, they.
He's here to talk about.
I know he is. This is bypassing over that. I mean, but I know they're on that program, but we all talked about, they really.
There's a big word vehicles, right? I think philosophically, what I'm hearing the council say is those kind of daily use trucks. Make a whole lot of sense to rotate every three years because there's value in them at three years. Al- almost regardless of usage, right? It it is almost better for us if they're low usage, because at three years, then we get more value out of them. And so for those daily use vehicles, the the um one fifties and two fifties and three, right? Those those make sense to rotate at three years, almost by schedule rather than by use. And and the three year rotation is is like that. Then you get into the the ones that we've identified as a longer rotation. Some of it is because of the cost. And how large they are, kind of the specialty equipment idea. Um the other. The the thing that gets interesting is those F five fifties, which are the brush trucks, are kind of in between. Yes, we outfit them and we put a lot on them and so it feels specialty, but they also are still that kind of daily use truck of the five fifty. However, again, we outfit them and so they they become specialty. And we would sell them as specialty to other departments. They wouldn't go back into the the general uh rotation schedule. And the market is different is what I'm saying. Maybe to summarize that, the market is different for those specialty F five fifties because of what we do to them and outfit them. However, that market is still there um at three years or four years or five years. So we just need to determine that. Um I think it's important to just maybe talk through that right now as far as the brush trucks. When we had them on the schedule before, um we were already bumping up at owning them for the three years. And so by pushing them off, we're we're essentially saying, well, we're gonna own them for four years, but it takes a year to. Takes a year to outfit them and get all that especially the equipment on it. So um. By surplusing them now, putting them on the list and actually surplusing them now. In my mind, that's the trigger to say, now go and do the replacement process. Do the order, have the outfit take place, and that still means those vehicles that we have currently would be. Almost four and a half, five years old if we surplus them within the next two months. Um so that's why I think why we bring it back up as a as a topic. Or wait till next year and then we're we're pushing past closer to that five year.
That would be a thorn in Derek's side, but though we don't have a budget for a wildland program this year. That's the reason we upgraded and went to the second brush truck.
Well, we always have two brushes.
Well, but we didn't upgrade and go to this type of brush trucks until we said we were going to be running these down the road. We had outfitted, I mean, you know, you know what I'm saying? That is when the that committee made the decision that we were going to go to this. High end of the brush truck. We never, we we were not outfitted like this. High end of the brush truck, we never, we we were not outfitted like this until that. Is that what we wanna stay if we don't have a wildland program? That's a lot of money. I mean, how much is a brush truck?
Does a brush truck need to be a five fifty? Is that the question?
No, I'm just asking in general, I mean, we we had a outfitted Hummer that we got for cheap and we've had. You know what I'm saying, Derek understands what I mean, that's.
Yeah, I think there's there. The conversation grabbing at the same time about moving everything over to the lease program. And uh yeah, the wildland program.
Two different discussions, yeah.
But as far as the, I guess to go back to the current brush trucks in our current situation, um. Yeah, those brush trucks could last us fifteen years, right? But my understanding of the whole reason we went to this lease rotation program was so we can start. Seeing realized gains as we rotate these vehicles. And the fact that these have low mileage is actually a benefit to us if if the lease programs can work as designed, we start rotating them. Like from an operational standpoint, it makes no difference to me, but if the lease program works is sold. Then we should stick with the lease program and start rotating these vehicles to realize those gains, so for me it's. There's two separate issues, operationally, that would be good for fifteen years, but if we're trying to maximize our return. Low mileage on a vehicle is a good way to maximize your return.
I I agree with you, I just don't, I don't know if the lease company can give us that kind of feedback or someone can give us that kind of feedback. Cause our initial evaluation on the lease program didn't have the fire department included in it at all.
Not, it didn't have, it didn't have the large apparatus, right, the trucks and the and the engine. It did not have the ambulance, right, either of the ambulance. Those four vehicles are all purchased straight up outright and separate from any of the lease rotation. Um and my recollection is that uh it was kind of kind of last minute to say. Well, the brush trucks can become part of this lease rotation, the timing was, oh, if we are gonna do a wildland program. We get more money by having our own vehicles than these old ones and those old ones, it was time to rotate anyway. We don't have enough money to just purchase those outright. And so let's put them on the lease program and it kind of a little bit of an afterthought, um.
The question I'm hearing from Blair, I wanna bring back to the chief is if we're not doing the land program, do we need those type of trucks equipped that way? Or does that need go away and go something else?
We still need brush trucks, yeah.
Are are they equipped with anything that is required if you're on the wildland program?
No, thanks.
The brush truck, the brush truck.
Yeah, in in order for the N W G C, the state comes out and inspects our brush trucks to make sure they're compliant with everything. So whether we're employing or not, that's something we'd be doing anyways.
Now, I think the wildland program was a way to say, we have these brush trucks that are needed here. But if we have a backup that's just gonna be sitting there, let's try to send it out and and make some money off of it. These they are, they're two, they're two nice vehicles, um and. We need two vehicles, just the way that fire, you know, fire apparatus um standards are. But we'll have two brush trucks either way, the question, the question is, do we need them to be. Outfitted or the size that they are, or could we do a different vehicle in the order, it would be a different type of brush truck?
And if we can get the same type of return of the regular vehicle, cause that's what we analyzed when we were trying to decide. We weren't dealing, I mean, again, a brush trucks well over a hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
We weren't analyzing that type of number, nor could that. Lease leasing entity at the time give us any information on that, right? I'm just saying, can they, can we get feedback, if we can make money on them and rotate them still every three years? I'm good with keeping them rotating every three years, I mean, I'd love them to be nice and I really would. I'm just saying that's a, if, but if it puts us in a negative, cause other fire departments are looking to buy a deal. Then that's not what we need to do, we need to be doing them a different way.
Is it, so I I appreciate that, we need that feedback, but is this something that we could do just like our fire trucks? Or yeah, engines. Set up every, you know, you have a ten year rotation, this is something we need to do this, hang on to one of these for five more years. Stagger the age of like.
Right, I had to set up the first four years I was chief, really it was the lease program that.
Changed.
Changed everything, and so initially it was, we're gonna set X amount for brush trucks, we're gonna set X amount aside for ambulances, we're gonna set. Money aside for the medic unit and B C truck, we're gonna set money aside for all these things and rotate them. But then we heard about this great lease thing where we get a return on our investment until we do a rotation. I don't think they're going to tell you what you want to hear, cause they don't wanna give you numbers that you're gonna hold them accountable to. And so some, as I know, nobody likes this, and if I were the public, I wouldn't like this either, nobody wants to hear, well. Let's just trust the system and see if the system works and we can pivot, I feel like it's not working, but. I feel like we're pulling the rug out before we can even figure out if this is gonna work. And and that's kind of where I'm coming from with it, is if 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 we believed in this. Let's see it through and if we realize this was a huge mistake, we can pivot, but. If we never give ourselves the opportunity to even realize that a game because we're not willing to rotate them. I think we're ch- cutting this the system short and not ongoing to work.
I agree with the chief, when we started talking about doing all of these fleets, that was the big question we all had was. Do we actually know that we will make money? And it's going to be a better program to do than three years instead of five or to hold on to them for ten years when we're not paying anything except being what's possible. Um and I I think until we go through a full cycle of release. And at the end of the the lease, we can look at it and say, okay, here's how much we did or didn't make. And do you have a a service life or regulated one that you've been on?
Yeah, twenty years.
Twenty years, so we know what the maximum is going to be, that it could be, uh I said we just run through. Let's see, and then if at that time it's ridiculously high to reinvest back into that, then we. Can say, you know, we're gonna sell it. But I think we do need to at least wait till that time.
But do we run it through a five years or three years?
I think, I don't, as far as three or five years, I don't know, I think there's some variables right now that I think it's. We should be discussing the the tariffs, whether you agree or disagree with them, that can impact supply chain issues again and cause. More problems, and then the beauty of the brush trucks, I mean, it's a, it's a blessing and a curse, right? Because we've seen how much fire apparatus increased year over year over year. Like, these brush trucks are probably gonna be one of our better returns on our investment. Because of the low mileage, because they're the F five fifties, and because. If you look at that six to twelve percent increase over fire apparatus year after year, like, I think we'll be see. I think they'll go for maybe more than the bottom four.
Unified did let us know that they they recommend the the brush trucks to be on five years. And if we, even if we surplus them now, we'll be very close to that five year mark anyways. Just because of the timeframe of the of outfitting for those.
So you recommend we move on that now?
At this point, no, it probably will be brought up within the next. If if council wants to go that direction, to have them rotated at five years, we would, I would suggest that we do that now.
As we, the staff recommends bringing back an action item to a council meeting in a future meeting to surplus the two brush trucks. And rotate them, start that rotation process now, that that's what we're suggesting.
Do we need to get them off, just gonna throw up, do we need them off the same rotation year though?
Actually, it's cheaper to build them together, uh in fact, we marry up when we, the fire district is building theirs and we just copy theirs.
So that, so you don't have to, yeah, but that makes sense.
So. We try to make as cheap as possible and build them together with same time we were just building theirs.
So, but if they rotate theirs three years or five years and they just have enough vehicles that.
They have a huge wildland fleet, so they're rotating every year, we just marry up with, hey, we're gonna copy whatever you're doing. And give us to.
I just wanted to say, chief, I appreciate your directness, your candor and and intuitive as well as discussion, I really appreciate that, thank you.
Any more discussions on on fleet?
One, one final statement maybe on fleet, I think part of our goal in all of this is to make fleet more of an operational cost. So that we know year by year how much money we're putting into fleet. And whether it's we're setting that money aside to make a big purchase. Or we are rotating, you know, three or five years or whatever as a lease program, ultimately, the idea is we have a dollar figure that we can say. Every year, this is the cost of our fleet. And that we have a fleet that we can rely on, that uh is not high maintenance cost because, you know. We have fleet that is reliable and whatnot, but that's ultimately the goal, um regardless of the rotation schedule. It's let's make sure we know what that fleet cost is and we have that more as an operational type.
I have two questions for Derek, if I may. It won't, it'll be quick. What's our rotation on the ambulance, since it's not on here?
So, we've been following Roy's rotation every five years. And so next year we'll be looking at when they rotate their interfacility Ambu to be taking that vehicle on.
Okay, next year.
Yeah, I believe we have been setting aside money in that apparatus um savings for ambulance specific there.
Perfect, uh that leads on my next question about the Quint, Peter Skin has an update, where are we at on that?
Yeah, so actually this last week, they, was last week, right, that I sent you those change orders. Um they sent us some change orders that actually saved us about ten thousand dollars, I get when you're talking one point three million, a thousand doesn't sound like a lot. But uh we, so we are under budget currently, they are also concerned about um the tariffs. And how that might affect their supply chain, but right now, things are looking really well with those change orders being put in place, they're gonna. Here within the next month, give us a timeframe when they're gonna start our build and estimated delivery date.
Perfect, if you understand this update, we appreciate that.
Yeah, I just literally, we got the change orders last week and that's the first major change that we've had, so.
Okay, thank you.
Derek, if I may, I have one more question, they, you were talking about uh how much money we're putting into the league program. For the public's benefit, it would be, it would be well if you had a comparison. There's how much money we're putting into the lease program, if we worked these and we're buying it out, like, this is how much money we would have to put in. So you could show the net savings over a year, over a few years, three years, so we can demonstrate to the public the savings on it out.
Um going into the utility funds. I don't have any specific detail to share on the, other than what's in the the budget document about each fund. There's some highlights that I wanted to point out is. What's that? Um I'm just looking at. The water fund, I was gonna start with the water fund. And that is on page eighty eight. There, there is just a ne- a three percent increase on the water utility revenues. Um that's just due to to growth, not necessarily an increase in the utility. On the, on your monthly utility bill. Uh the water bill for that is still the same. And. For sanitation, there is an increase in sanitation due to the recycling program. That is on, that starts on page. That will start on page ninety seven. As you can see, there there is a quite a bit of an increase for the recycling program. I kind of broke it out by a percentage of. Of those that we expect to to go into one black can and one recycling can. And those that stick with one black can, I tried to kind of play those scenarios to see where people would land. Um and and that's the estimate that I that I came up with. As we get into more closer to to in July and August, I'll have a better idea. And if we need to adjust the budget at that point, we can, and I tried to make a good estimate, but we, it's indeed unknown at this point. So like I did expect an increase. Uh our current rate is fifteen forty seven for one can. Those going into that one is is the twenty four fourteen expected amounts, these are, these are estimates at this point. Storm drain is just a three percent increase, um from year to year, we just. Uh the storm drain has always had a a three percent increase, and so I just followed that same process. At doing three percent, and that's, that does impact the the monthly bill.
Always meaning since the rate spent a few years ago.
Correct, yes, since the rate spent, my apology. Central Weaver Sewer, they increased their fee by six percent, so we're just passing that six percent along. Uh to the to the monthly bill for individuals, that rate went from. Twenty two twenty six to twenty three fifty nine. And I have that reflected in. In the in the sales for for the sewer fund. Um so Weaver Sewer Fund, I I kept that amount at the same, the the rate is the same, so that didn't change. And also transportation didn't change. Are there questions about the utility funds that you guys have? Things that we want to look at?
I think most of these we've all addressed, so.
I appreciate that summary of the monthly utility rate for for users, though, that that's good.
Just FYI, that does increase the total bill for if if everything was just kept the same. Um the very minimum amount right now is at one twenty two twenty. And that will go up to one thirty two seventy the next year. This point, I don't have any further discussing items for the budget unless you guys have questions.
Thank you, Brad. Appreciate that. Uh new business? Anyone have any new business?
Dave, you have any new business?
I do not.
I have some new business that we discussed yesterday, um we had a meeting with Country Fairbanks, what did yesterday? They are trying to discuss ways to better manage their budget and. Seeing if the city would perhaps entertain helping them um decrease some of their costs on their total budget. One of the ideas they came up with was expanding the stage in Central Park permanently. So a temporary stage costs some thirty five hundred dollars every year for a week. Um they rent a sixteen foot stage um to put on there. They are proposing or asking if the council would be willing to make that permanent. And they would be willing about just twelve feet. So we would have to. Form backfill on concrete to match the current stage. Um estimates for the concrete would be about five thousand dollars. Give or take, and then we would see if we can have donations for people to help do some of the work, so.
We feel like they can get all of the like we donated on it. Quickly put a pencil to concrete, about five thousand, five, six thousand dollars worth of being in concrete. Again, you said they spent thirty five hundred dollars a year uh to rent it for a week, so. They're willing to, you know, put that thirty five hundred dollars, we'd like to. Get it in as quickly as we can so they can use it this year, well, you know, they would place the thirty five hundred dollars this year. If the city doesn't wanna put. Any into it. Then, you know, they might get done, you may have to. Pay the additional, whatever, and then maybe they have to be a precious. Invest some of the money, I would think they would do that, don't you think that's anyone they can?
Yes, well, we could decrease our contribution to it like.
Yeah.
The consideration for the park, um it does not appear that it would interfere with any of our vet sports. However, um I mentioned earlier, but I did not have time to see it, more sprinklers might be close to the stage.
We may have to be log kicked and sprinklers, I think there may be one or two. Might have to be, but I think there may be. Concern was, will the council allow that stage to be. Permanently spanned out another twelve feet into the park.
I do good.
Do you have any injury reason why you couldn't? There's down into the floor.
Was putting foundation fill. Fill and then force lab.
Yeah. Well, I guess my question is then are we just doing a short term fix? Or should we be looking at? Uh because this isn't planning on going anywhere, although maybe next year it might be. Um does that need to be a larger stage that we need to look at, so we're not just? Another couple of years doing the same thing again, or? I mean, it just backfires.
Well, they, they made a sixteen foot, I thought. A permanent one out sixteen feet might be a little bit intrusive. You'd have to go down there and do that. I mean, but sixteen's not that bad. I think sixteen's a little bit too far for bringing.
The, the stage wasn't going anywhere, it was.
I think, I think our long term goal is that stage. Will stay there and the battery.
How about our uh concerts in the park?
That would actually be beneficial to that.
Would it allow for the, again, the bigger. Usage of a band than maybe just our small thing? Again, do we need to then just remove the line? It's asking the question.
They would love for us to invest a lot in for Country Fair Days for, you know, winter, but. I feel like this is pretty. Pretty reasonable.
Not talking about extending the apron.
I would think if they put their thirty five hundred. We could come up with the rest and they keep the rest of next year.
Sounds great.
Sponsors and donations.
And and some of the other research studies they have, they already had some ideas on how to get some sponsors for those.
If they'll sponsor for the ex- they expansion. You have an email.
Yeah, yeah, that's, those are some of the things.
Quite a few different things that they want and they've been doing those. That way, but if they get all of the uh labor donated, I mean, that is, that is sponsored.
The only other item that I wanted to bring up right now was they currently have two um. Storage cubes on the Public Works building property um to store all their stuff in. They were wondering if they would be able to move those to our main Public Works facility, knowing that that property over there. Look, potentially, so they won't be utilizing anymore, so.
Staff would prefer they'd storm somewhere else because there have been plenty of times in the past where their access to that has been problematic. Um if it's a weekend or after hours or things like that, we're asking staff to come back to let them in or we're giving them access to the, to the facility.
Are, we, we, we asked them about that. We told them they wouldn't have access. We told them we felt like we could provide storage for them down there, but they absolutely would not have access. It was. Other than business hours. And they were fired.
You can store it all in the fire department, they have somebody there coming for seven hundred.
They felt like one of the connects is uh they've got all of the uh. Framework for all of the booths, you know. They're wanting to sell that. Do we? And I think we donated that to them, we gave it to them. We told them we weren't opposed to them to selling it. Anybody here has objection to them selling that? Everybody that does boots now, last year they didn't set it up, everybody just brings their own canopy. And sets up, so they thought that they maybe. Could advertise that, sell that, and if that's the case, they could probably.
So potential to just have one, however that being said. They would like um some other equipment, so I don't know if they're gonna have her, they just want they get much attention, I think, so.
Public Works mentioned that there's a property on thirteen seventy five where Keith has, has some equipment. That is also because it's next to my life.
Keith, would that, would that be a problem for access or anything?
No, you got shut down on access for others. Is kind of what they fit by Curtis's building. In second block and north west corner of the park.
I actually prefer a Public Works versus the park. And I, I.
I think we need to facilitate somewhere.
I do too. I, I recognize that. They need to um work with Public Works schedule. But I feel like the Public Works, I mean, we can't do Country Fair Days without Public Works anyways. And that they're playing hand in hand. Either the city's working with Country Fair Days or we're not. And I don't think it's reasonable to expect them to have those on their property, so. We need to have somewhere for it, but as far as if you put those at Central Park, you're, I think you're asking kids to climb on them and. And trying to look inside them and. It, to me, it's better to have them locked up and gated behind.
Security.
What is it that they're lost, that they're trying to store?
The, their big connect storage units, like similar to the one across the street here. That has all the country fair days supplies in it.
And then where's it at now? The older, okay.
If the council direction is for staff to find a place for it, then we'll find a place for it.
And we did discuss that if they during the design of Public Works. That they could, even if it was on the dirt, that it would get.
Yeah, there, there's room there. So that would be my preferred location for it, honestly. I don't see. A better spot for it.
Yeah, I, I, I'd love to give them access wherever they need, but I just think we have so much problem here and. The city that could be accessible, uh if we're just putting connects which. When they're not gonna move or do anything with them for an entire year. So uh I really think there just would be a place where they can get to and maybe go into before the season starts coming up, but. Maybe about that. I don't want, I don't want them locked away, or do I want them just sitting in the park, kind of the same, this.
They're fairly easy to climb, so kids will hunt them, just. Where everyone's gonna get ready to.
I think that's our recommendation.
Yeah, I'm knocking on the spot. I, I like the idea, uh having them in close getting where, you know, probably being accessed. I want the idea of, uh, well, it's only two conbots now, I'm getting just three conbots and one conbot and. There has to be some restrictions, some limitations and follows. Steph has a meeting with Country Fair Days Committee uh for just operational coordination coming up and so, well. Have that as part of the operational coordination.
Awesome. Thank you. She also just wanted to make sure we're all aware on Monday night for dinner, they would like the council to be available. To serve. August. August fourth will be dinner. That's all that I have for you.
Council, anything that maybe your folks want, we'll start with you.
Uh we had a quarterly meeting with the Gravewitz. Um they did mention. Um both had some equipment. You know, there's also their equipment for a month. Inhibited their ability to keep the dust. I say that in the focus part, get it crucified because dust is always a problem. Um we recognize that. And in legislation, we have a limitation of what we can do, but you know, I'll recognize they are not mining. Much for term and they are processing. And so we're looking into uh those rules with regards to the state, who can, can have the floor processing and. Their agreement is except expires, shake of bars, it's gonna expire in December. So we are looking at uh. Uh don't call me Google, but developing a cooperation agreement. And at this time, you know, there's also um an active participant. We'll see if they'll actually follow through. Uh we are looking at uh. Updating and. Working with them as much as we can and the legislation is allowing to work with them and that's to be mitigating and managing. The impact they're having on citizens, so. More to come on that. Um we might have another meeting in June and then we're recording it in July.
And, and that was called. It's not, it's not the, what was it called, the Parsons that you guys have with Parsons? The, the, it was, it's not a development agreement, but it was.
Cooperation.
Cooperation, okay.
Um actually, it's been quite hard to put up some committees uh that, that I chair, so. Uh really don't have anything to do. Uh I do have a quick question for staff, though. Um do we have any idea what is going to be running across the street and? Um if it's. We have active enforcement taking place on that. We do not have active. Uh response and property owner who wants to cooperate, so. But that is something that is actively being worked on. I know it doesn't feel like it, but. Uh enforcement actions are in process.
So what can we do there? Because he's past the deadline, right? His deadline was the tenth. He's passed that and he showed up either on the tenth or the eleventh and he worked for a day and now he's left again, right? So what's, what can we do there, Jimmy? Can we just go in and bring that out? We gotta.
Yeah, it was a notices and nuisance violation. I'll, I'll check um see if it was notices and nuisance violation. If it was, the city can go in and debate that nuisance. And then we would charge the property owner for. I'll check, I can. Not a nuisance. It's a comfortably used. I think I would recommend noticing it ASAP as a nuisance violation. Give them an amount, I mean, think appropriate, be ready until week to ten days. Unless there's some condition over there that you think is a common safety threat. I don't see that. But if there is, you can shorten that timeframe. And then if they don't comply by that deadline, let's, we have a group that would just go in and bait it, we track that expense. If it's our own crew, it would be the hourly plus whatever they use and cost of that. If you contract for it, then it would just be in contract to the amount. Um and then you take care of it and we put that as a re- emergency.
I, I always heard self-help is. What can we do? Get to, I'd be very careful. We are dealing with somebody's personal property. Well, there's the nuisance versus catching somebody else's personal property and they're liable for that. Is that really the next step? I mean, I know there's several steps you may have to go through all these hoops.
Well, there's a, there are different, the way your code's written, you have a lot of different tools you can apply. You could, at this point where it was noticed as a normal violation. What you can do is have the fine amount be banned and it would accrue on the daily. And so each day would be a new and separate violation that was. If you can go up to a thousand dollars a day, I don't know that you'd want to go that high, but you could go. At whatever amount that is each day with you and that adds up quickly. A nuisance, you know, the. The value in that is it allows for self-help. There's the way it's noticed right now, you don't have that self-help option.
Rises by a nuisance violation will be semi- and then a certain amount of days and then if not, it's like, it's self-happens.
Correct. You would still give notice, you'd still, they've been posting notice on the property when we can't locate the property owner. And I think you, you know, you certainly wanna make sure when you give them notice, every opportunity to cure it, but if it's not being cured. Yeah. Then that's an option that's available. I agree with you, you wanna be cautious online and having to use that, but. Um we've had to threaten that before, we've had buildings that were structurally. Unstable, we've had no signal, as far as I know, those things are being cured, but we don't have a responsive property. Thank you.
Um second, I just wanted to uh. You done your commitment, right? Well, that's what I was gonna say. Easter egg got huge, great, fantastic success. Um just wanna thank staff and fortunately for working so hard on it and getting everything done. Um and Angie too. Um one thing I noticed uh this time was that we had. Uh quite a few. Uh citizens residents who thought that we were um doing a. I don't know, area wide, you know, Easter egg hunt instead of a, a city Easter egg hunt. Um I looked on Saturday morning, cause I was actually confused, I actually got the date completely wrong in this. Uh the Friday night, um almost all the other cities have theirs Saturday at like nine or ten o'clock. And what that does is it stops people from just going back and forth, coming to ours and then going to their own. Um I mean, I'm not trying to be a, a bunny Grinch, uh but. I'm just wondering how many, how much uh the participation that we have that grows every year is non-South Weber and. Uh do we want to ever address that? Separate from all of that, though, I think we did a fantastic job and Shaila, you did, you did great. And everybody who helped put the eggs together.
I don't know how you control that.
Yeah, I think, I think it was great. Uh before Haley and I ever did the Easter egg hunt and we had conditioned it on Monday. Before Easter, we bumped it to Friday so we could make it more of a commu- a city event, really. So I guess we can talk about that if we wanted to move it to a Saturday morning.
Completely up to you guys, I mean, I don't wanna set my toes on that, so.
But I, I agree. Well done. Well done. It was all Shaila.
Where are you getting?
The only thing I had is we have a federal course restoration advisory board tomorrow. Or thirty, if anything you want to dedicate a bachelor. Many members, please let me.
Okay, I think that's it. We look for most of you to do.